It's freezing here. I'm sitting out there, but this side of the room is really cold.
I guess somebody turned it down.
Probably so.
After a moment of silence, we're going to ask some Mark Sacks and the leaders in pledge to the flag. Please stand.
Thank you. My name is. President of the United States of America and to the Republic of Louisiana, one nation, united. First item of business, we need to approve the agenda. I will ask that we remove item 71, the joint use agreement with the Board of Education to give us a little more time to work on that. So if we could get a motion to approve the agenda without deletion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda submitted with the change.
Second.
Can we have a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next item is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda tonight. Anyone virtually? Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, did you have a chance to verify that DOT meeting?
I did not. They have they have reserved that location, but I have not confirmed with DOT that's actually going forward yet.
Okay, so. I just want to make the other commissions where I found out the DOT was having a town hall about the 316 quarter changes at the Bogart Community Center on May the 25th at 4:00 PM. And and I just found out about it just quite by accident. We haven't gotten any communication from the DOT. So if we do get some, if you can confirm that for us. And I'm sure a lot of people be interested in attending that.
I would think so. So I've reached out to the project manager for that. Have not heard back yet, but they did reserve that location. Just there's been no publicity on it yet. So I don't know if it's a firm date yet or not.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
Do want to remind everybody that May 1st started the burn ban. That'll run through September 13th. So no more burning your leaves and limbs. Our next item of business, we need to approve the minutes. This will be from our regular meeting on April 4th and the agenda setting meeting on April 25th.
Make a motion to approve minutes estimated.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now go move into our zoning matters. Rezone petition petitions shall be presented by the staff with no time limit. Those wishing to speak for the rezone will have a total of 20 minutes less than applicants reserve for reserve time for rebuttal. And those wishing to speak against will also have 20 minutes. After that, the public comments section will be be closed and the board commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions as they find appropriate. And then we'll make a decision based on asset out in the unified development code. So with that, we're going to call rezone P 23-0087, Zocconi County Board of Commissioners, B 1 to B 1 and B 2, 42.76 acres on southeast corner of Highway 78 and 53.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P 23 0087, located in the western portion of the county at Highway 78 and Highway 53. Tax parcel is A 02025HA. It's currently zoned B 1 in the civic center character area. Again, this request is pursuant to the settlement agreement with Don Hammond in the case of Hammond versus Okone County. The Okone County Board of Commissioners initiating a rezone of subject property from B 1, general business district to B 1 and B 2 highway business district for a mixed use commercial development. This is a settlement agreement concept plan that's in your packets. These are the architectural images submitted with the application. And the five recommendations, we have our standard one, two, and three recommendations. But number four, at its expense, the owner shall construct all transportation improvements recommended by the traffic study completed by A and R Engineering data 51822, or as otherwise approved by Okone County Public Works Director. Number five, an internal sidewalk network shall connect all uses within the development to sidewalks along rights of way. Pedestrian connectivity shall be provided throughout the development, including raised decorative crosswalks. Final design of the sidewalk network shall be subject to the approval of the planning director and shall be shown on the preliminary plat and site plans for each phase of the development. And that that is our presentation. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Carter with Carter Engineering, 3651 Marshall Road in Watkinsville. I believe the the presentation that that we made a few months back stands on its own merit. This this property was rezoned back in 1990. We've proven that all the uses that back then are allowed by right now. So all the uses that were that were asking to do on the property was approvable back in 1991. For example, the Walmart here is zone B 1. All the restaurants and Butler's Crossing, for the most part, are zone B 1. So all the uses back then are still applicable now, except for the zoning code has changed. And we feel like that that this property is 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 very well situated in the county. It's a very good place for it. It with with all the houses that's coming in Westland, I think there's 400 houses that are coming there. This will be a good place for them to shop and not go down to Butler's Cross, which we all know that Butler's Crossing is very jammed right now. And so this will, this is the 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 county has looked this strategically in terms of where would be a good place for shopping center. And this is the a very good place for it. So we appreciate your support and try to answer any questions that you that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for?
My name is Jeff Pittman. I'm with Piedmont Real Estate Group. I represent Don Hammond. I'm the developer of the property. On behalf of Mr. Hammond, I did want to mention one thing that the the burn that we've proposed in the most recent site plan is probably the most significant burn that's ever been proposed in this county. And maybe in the state of Georgia in terms of its ability to separate the two uses. We don't want to overlook that, that that is, I've never seen anything of this design before. I think Mr. Carter can verify that. It's a we've come, I think, in considerable ways in trying to meet every objection of the opposition to this this case. We spent an important amount of time and funds to do that. We redesigned the property four times. The current design is a good design, and we're frankly, we're happy that we went through the process of going this. We think we've got ultimately something that is going to benefit the county in ways that we didn't see at the beginning. And that includes changing really a concentration of strip retail and major stores into a configuration with restaurant and service uses in the middle of project. And we think that's actually much more current in terms of what the market's looking for. So we think in our desire is for this property to be a beacon in that area of the county and just deliver the very best possible result we can for development to really improve that area of the county. And I I hope that the commissioners can understand that that vision is a very positive vision and a very attractive vision. And we think ultimately it's going to build a lot of traffic in a good way. It'll be a magnet for people to bring their families, to enjoy the interconnectivity in the site, and really find a place to congregate in ways that aren't typical in a project of this type. So for that reason, we're happy we went through the process and we we think it's there's going to be a great benefit and we would appreciate your support.
Mr. Chairman, I am Brandon Bowen. I represent the developer as well, and we would just reserve the remainder of our time to address any comments.
Thank you. Now we'll move to those speaking against Stanton Porter.
Okay, Rick, you want to come on up?
Rick Caffrey, 1430 Okoni Crossing Circle. Good evening, Board of Commissioners, Holly, Justin, Daniel. I can honestly say that I'm happy to see you guys tonight, six short months after the vote in October, but here we are. I also want to thank all of our supporters, not only the red shirt brigade that's here tonight, but also Okoni citizens at large, many of who have reached out to us in support, including the 800 plus folks that signed our petition last year. We've also heard from many people throughout the county that have expressed anger and frustration by the decision that we heard about six weeks ago where you guys have decided to settle with the developer without any significant change in the location of the grocery store. The optics aren't good. You know, we were all so proud of you guys for protecting us in October from this Kennesaw developer. And now you apparently are acquiescing with that so much as a fight. That's what that's what it seems like. It's very disappointing. Kyle, can you put the map up for me? Kyle, is this the one from the first one? Yes. So guys, this is the this is the map that they presented in October. And let's not forget that this isn't the map that they presented initially without any kind of cooperation or, you know, working with with the community. So we originally the what happened? Thanks. Originally, the let's see. So this is Corporate Drive. This gentleman right here, this this is where they live. They were going to put that grocery store right there. That's where it was going to be. The the service end of that store was going to be facing their yard. We got them to move the store. We we told them, look, the the biggest issue issue we have is the location of that store. Why can't you put this big old grocery store up here on 78? So they, you know, they they took some of our ideas. They incorporated them into a much better looking map. It's it's going to be a lot more pedestrian friendly. We actually support this project. If they would just move the grocery store up on 78, but instead what they did is they moved it over here. So this is the second map, right? It's hard to tell. Yeah, it is because there's that little. Okay, so this is what they presented the board in return to settling the the lawsuit. And I mean, I just heard about this significant burn, one of the all time great burns in Georgia history. And it's going to go right in here, but they moved the store up 25 feet. So just to give you an idea, this wall, this wall is 23 feet. That's it. This gentleman right here, Paul, that lives. I think that's it right there. And Paul. So he's still going to be subjected, all these folks around this line are going to be subjected to a lot of noise. You know, the the beeping of the trucks, which we're going to hear about here a little bit. It's it's not a significant change. And and what I want to do, guys, is kind of refresh your memory, just sort of go back to the meeting in October. The reason that they that we were given for not moving that store is, and I quote Jeff Carter, "business timing and process." Those were the reasons. When Mark Thomas asked Jeff Carter, and I quote, "Could the grocery store be moved up closer to where the four retail spaces are located or closer to 78 like the homeowners wanted?" And Jeff Carter's response was, "It is possible to move it closer to 78 from a design and engineering standpoint." So, you know, why won't they do it? When when Chuck Horton asked Guy, and he said, look, referring to 1990, if we were starting from square one, where this was typical HE property, we wouldn't do this, would we? In 1990, they did something we wouldn't do today. And Guy's response was, yes, sir. Chuck said, "That's an issue I keep coming back to. We don't do these anymore." There would be some type of a buffer, maybe even another classification between B 2 and a residential, right? And Guy's response was, "Yes, whether it's OIP or B 1, typically that's what we do." So right up in here, there typically, there is nothing in Okoni County where you got a 52,000 square foot grocery store with the back end of it facing residences. That's the protection we have under B 1. And you guys are looking to strip it away from us. And we just, we just, we just can't wrap our heads around that. In terms of the litigation, Amory Harden asked Mr. Haygood, "Does he have access to remedy through the courts?" He being the the Mr. Hammond. Remedy through the courts if he doesn't want to wait a year, because that was one of the options. He could wait a year like the folks that Okoni Connector did, come up with a modified plan, hopefully come to the neighborhood, work with us. That didn't happen, so they sued the county. And Amory asked about that. Mr. Haygood's response was, "Yes, but the reality is you can almost never get through the courts in a year." So a lot of times, a smarter play is to continue to work towards something everyone can live with. Amory then said, "Has there ever been a situation where a judge crammed something down our throats that we didn't want?" Mr. Haygood said, "No." Long pause. We've had over the years, very good luck defending what we've done. We get our litigators and harness and defend the lawsuit. Well, guys, that's what we want you to do. We just want you to defend the lawsuit. Let the chips fall, you know, where they may with a judge. That's what we're asking for tonight. We're asking for you guys to please continue to defend us and stay with the convictions that you all had in October and not roll over for these guys. I also want to, one last quote from John Daniel. When John and Amory were exchanging some comments, and John said something to the effect, back in 2009, when you first started, you had a huge case with even more people coming in, 441 and La Vista. And and you said, you said 441 La Vista was similar, but the developer had to change. And Amory said, but as it turned out, Amory said, but as it turned out, they didn't get what they wanted or what they asked for, did they? And John, your response was, no. We're just asking you guys to 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 vote to let this go on to the courts. I mean, Mr. Pittman just talked about this is going to be a beacon. It is going to be a beacon. It's going to be a beacon in our neighborhood. It's going to be lights everywhere. We're willing to work with these guys. All we're asking for at this point is that they move that grocery store. You're talking about putting a grocery store over here off over closer to Hog Mountain Road. And I know that the the thought is that maybe the service trucks, the tractor trailers are going to come in through here, I guess. But you know, doggone well, once those drivers figure out they can come in through Hog Mountain Road, you're talking about 15 to 20 tractor trailers a day. If it's if it is public, in fact, it's going to come in there, it's going to be about 15 to 20 tractor trailers a day. It's going to be a nightmare. So let the judge decide. That's all we're asking for. Thanks.
How much time do I have? Okay. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Paul Blud of 1660 Okoni Crossing Circle. I believe you should deny this request as you did in October. They moved the store 30 feet up. They added 25 feet of buffer, which at a first glance may seem like a huge improvement to you, but in reality actually makes almost no difference. And I will have the data and facts that prove that the service area cannot be abiding residential properties, just what the current B 1 zone says, the current one meaning next to myself. So I'm referring to the same protections that exist for B 1 but do not exist for B 2, 20509 C 4D section of the UDC code. Service areas, delivery areas, and dumpster areas shall be directed and located away from any residential side of the development, and in no case shall they be located directly between the building and the residential lot. In no case means in no case and does not mean increased buffer or anything else. The language is pretty clear. Now let's establish some timeline. Those protections were added to the UDC code in 2019. As we haven't heard otherwise, Mr. Hammond accepted those changes the same year because he didn't protest them, right? I purchased my house in 2021 next to B 1 zone with those protections already in place. Please note that those rules in the UDC code itself do not contradict the future of Okoni Plan. They do establish the guidelines of how things should be moving forward. We've also heard from many people throughout the county that have expressed anger and frustration by the decision that we heard about six weeks ago where you guys have decided to settle with the developer without any significant change in the location of the grocery store. The optics aren't good. You know, we were all so proud of you guys for protecting us in October from this Kennesaw developer. And now you apparently are acquiescing with that so much as a fight. That's what it, that's what it seems like. It's very disappointing. Kyle, can you put the map up for me? Kyle, is this the one from the first one? So guys, this is the, uh, this is the map that they presented in October. And let's not forget that this isn't the map that they presented initially without any kind of cooperation or, 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 you know, working with, with the community. So we originally the, what happened? Thanks. Originally the, uh, let's see. So this is corporate drive. This gentleman right here, this, this is where they live. They were going to put that grocery store right there. That's where it was going to be. The, the service end of that store was going to be facing their yard. We got them to move the store. We, we told them, look, the, the biggest issue, issue we have is the location of that store. Why can't you put this big old grocery store up here on seventy-eight? So they, um, you know, they, they took some of our ideas. They incorporated them into a much better looking map. It's, it's going to be a lot more pedestrian friendly. We actually support this project. If they would just move the grocery store up on seventy-eight, but instead what they did is they moved it over here. So this is the second map, right? It's hard to tell. Yeah, it is because there's that little, okay. So this is what they presented the board uh, in return to settling the, the, uh, the lawsuit. And I mean, I just heard about this significant berm, one of the all time great berms in Georgia history. And it's going to go right in here, but they moved the store up twenty-five feet. So just to give you an idea, this wall, this wall is twenty-three feet. That's it. This gentleman right here, Paul, that lives. I think that's it right there. And then Paul. So he's still going to be subjected, all these folks around this line are going to be subjected to a lot of noise. You know, the, the, the beeping of the trucks, which we're going to hear about here a little bit. It's, it's not a significant change. And, and what I want to do, guys, is um, kind of refresh your memory, just sort of go back to the meeting in October. The reason, um, that they, that we were given for not moving that store is, and I quote Jeff Carter, business, timing and process. Those, those were the reasons. When Mark Thomas asked Jeff Carter, and I quote, could the grocery store be moved up closer to where the four retail spaces are located? Or closer to seventy-eight like the homeowners wanted? And Jeff Carter's response was it is possible to move it closer to seventy-eight from a design and engineering standpoint. So, you know, why won't they do it? When, um, when Chuck Horton asked Guy, and he said, look, referring to nineteen ninety, if we were starting from square one where this was typical HE property, we wouldn't do this, would we? In nineteen ninety, they did something we wouldn't do today. And Guy's response was, yes, sir. Chuck said, that's an issue I keep coming back to. We don't do these anymore. There would be some type of a buffer, maybe even another classification between B two and, and a residential, right? And Guy's response was, yes, whether it's OIP or B one, typically that's what we do. So right up in here, there typically, there is nothing in Oconee County where you got a fifty-two thousand square foot grocery store with the back end of it facing residences. That's the protection we have under B one. And you guys are looking to strip it away from us. And we just, we just, we just can't wrap our heads around that. In terms of the litigation, Amory Harden asked Mr. Haygood, does he have access to remedy through the courts? He being the, the, uh, Mr. Hammond. Remedy through the courts if he doesn't want to wait a year because that was one of the options. He could wait a year like the folks that Oconee, Oconee Connector did. Come up with a modified plan, hopefully come to the neighborhood, work with us. That didn't happen. So they sued the county. And Amory asked about that. Mr. Haygood's response was, yes, but the reality is you can almost never get through the courts in a year. So a lot of times a smarter play is to continue to work towards something everyone can live with. Amory then said, has there ever been a situation where a judge crammed something down our throats that we didn't want? Mr. Haygood said, no. Long pause. We've had over the years, very good luck defending what we've done. We get our litigators and harness and defend the lawsuit. Well, guys, that's what we want you to do. We just want you to defend the lawsuit. Let the chips fall, you know, where they may with the judge. That's what we're asking for tonight. We're asking for you guys to please continue to defend us and stay with the convictions that you all had in October. And not roll over for these guys. I also want to, one last quote from John Daniel. When John and Amory were exchanging some comments. And John said something to the effect, back in two thousand nine, when you first started, you had a huge case with even more people coming in, four forty-one and La Vista. And, and you said, you said four forty-one La Vista was similar, but the developer had to change. And Amory said, but as it turned out, Amory said, but as it turned out, they didn't get what they wanted or what they asked for, did they? And John, your response was no. We're just asking you guys to, to, to vote, to let this go on to the courts. I mean, Mr. Pittman just talked about this is going to be a beacon. It is going to be a beacon. It's going to be a beacon in our neighborhood. It's going to be lights everywhere. We're willing to work with these guys. All we're asking for at this point is that they move that grocery store. You're talking about putting a grocery store over here off, over closer to, to, uh, Hog Mountain Road. And I know that, uh, the, the thought is that maybe the service trucks, the, the tractor trailers are going to come in through here, I guess. But you know, doggone well, once those drivers figure out they can come in through Hog Mountain Road, you're talking about fifteen to twenty tractor trailers a day. If it's, if it is publics, in fact, it's going to come in there. It's going to be about fifteen to twenty tractor trailers a day. It's going to be a nightmare. So let the judge decide. That's all we're asking for. Thanks.
How much time do I have? Thirty-two. Okay. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Paul Blud of sixteen sixty Oconee Crossing Circle. I believe you should deny this request as you did in October. They moved the store thirty feet up. They added twenty-five feet of buffer, which at a first glance may seem like a huge improvement to you, but in reality actually makes almost no difference. And I will have the data and facts that prove that the service area cannot be abiding residential properties, just what the current B one zone says, the current one, meaning next to myself. So I'm referring to the same protections that exist for B one, but do not exist for B two. Two oh five oh nine C four D section of the UDC code. Service areas, delivery areas and dumpster areas shall be directed and located away from any residential side of the development and in no case shall they be located directly between the building and the residential lot. In no case means in no case and does not mean increased buffer or anything else. The language is pretty clear. Now let's establish some timeline. Those protections were added to the UDC code in two thousand nineteen. As we haven't heard otherwise, Mr. Hammond accepted those changes the same year because he didn't protest them, right? I purchased my house in twenty twenty-one next to B one zone with those protections already in place. Please note that those rules in the UDC code itself do not contradict the future of a Coney plan. They do establish the guidelines of how things should be moving forward. Now, the most obvious fact with this plan is, or I guess the most screening fact is that every single plan so far, and I mean it, every single plan is based on the removal of B one protections when switching to B two. And I think it's an intent because in October, when you denied the plan, you actually questioned this exploit. You did. But then they're submitting the same plan, and that's why there is an intent to use this removal of protections. So you see this, the small store here, um, wouldn't work with B one. However, they make the store bigger. You approve the rezon on paper. You just changed the number from one to two, and suddenly this big store works. That's the magic of this. Unfortunately flawed UDC code as of right now. So I was looking for a word that describes what's happening here. And Cambridge Dictionary has a word for it. To exploit is to use someone or something unfairly for your own advantage. They are using the imperfections of the UDC code to unfairly remove existing protections from my property for their own advantage and, you know, profit. How would I know? So I would ask you this question. In twenty twenty-one, when I was buying my house, when I was investing, the biggest investment in my life, how would I know that today you would just remove those protections without proper reasoning? And most importantly, proper consideration. When I mean proper, it has to have some, you know, a research or some knowledge that this buffer, you know, the best buffer, like they said, is going to be enough. Now let's talk about civic center. I know it was, it was brought many times to their advantage, like this, this area is supposed to be civic center. That's fine. But they never mentioned that one of the strategies of the civic center is this, protect existing neighborhoods from negative impacts. And there is another strategy for civic center. There should be adequate buffering between commercial and adjacent residential uses from light, sound dumpster enclosures and HVAC systems. So I ask you, please tell me how removing those protections from me and some neighbors actually align with those strategies of the civic center, which is part of the, again, the documents from Oconee County. We feel like we're being failed on every single level. First of all, it was the planning department who came up with a UDC code that flawed with some issues, but that's okay. Every document has some imperfections and there are people after all. Secondly, planning and staffing commissions, you know, didn't catch it. And they pre-approved the, the original plan, even though it contradicts common sense. And our case should have followed exactly the same exceptions as Mars Hill's road area where B two actually has the same protections as B one. And now you, Board of Commissioners, you're potentially closing your eyes on that by approving it. And I say that because you caught and questioned that exploit in October twenty twenty-two, which as you can see in, in the transcripts that I put on your tables and I sent through emails. So let's take a look at this new plan. So they put some line of sight picture by questioning from the right beginning. And the reason is this building that they called my property, it's actually, well, my house is three times taller than this building. So this doesn't represent line of sight. This does not represent, uh, the sound. It doesn't do anything. It's actually misleading. And I'm not sure if it's on purpose or not. So I went ahead and first see the commercial beeper that's installed on trucks, the real ones connected to the battery. I'm not going to use it because it's, it's very, very loud. And then, and then I went three hundred feet into the forest and did the tests. And my wife was recording stuff from the inside and outside. But first of all, I want to say what Wikipedia says about these beepers. They're super loud. Brains do not adapt to the repetitive and persistent sound of backup beepers. The sound is perceived as irritating or painful, which breaks concentration. In some countries, backup warning systems using blasts of white noise have become more common, well, great for those countries. And I believe that, and by the way, so we're going to listen to some video pretty shortly, but I want to tell you that. And as you know, that, that I also have some videos from other properties, up to five houses. I want to, you know, ask for permission and you know, you can hear the sound as well. And one of those houses is as far as five hundred feet away from the source of the sound. And when I went into the forest, I placed the beeper exactly where the trucks would be. So I can do my math and calculations, as you can imagine. So I can tell you that it's going to be unbearable. Plus, I can also tell you that my, my conditions were very favorable for the developer because keep in mind that a hundred feet of the forest, which I had in my test, will be completely gone. And on top of that, my house will be exposed to the direct sound, which I will explain why, because it does look like that, but I will explain why. So can we please play the video with a sound, hopefully, because that's the whole idea? So right now the windows are closed, just so you know, and my windows are brand new, but it's not through the entire house. And then my wife will open the windows. Okay, this doesn't justify it, but let's do it differently. Because this is this is not fair, really. Again, and if you don't trust me, you know, you're welcome to come, um, and we can do the test together, but that's how it's going to sound. And again, it's very loud, honestly. But anyway, um, the developer's fix is to move the grocery store thirty feet up. I can tell you that from the calculations, those additional thirty feet will decrease the sound of the noise by less than one decibel. And, you know, to simplify it, I guess, the real life loudness will only go down by about five to seven percent. So if you thought in October that hundred percent of the noise is bad, why would you say today that ninety-five percent or even ninety-three percent is suddenly okay? Now, we're also dealing with three types of the sound. The first one is how do I switch to the next slide? I'm sorry. Yeah, it does. Oh, it did work. Okay, sorry. So the first sound type of sound is transmitted. It, it's the one that goes through the wall. The second one type is deflected. That's the one that goes above the berm and above the fence. And the third type is the direct sound. And that's probably the worst, right? As you can imagine. So you would ask me, okay, Paul, how are you really exposed to, you know, the direct sound? Well, it's easy. The wall of the store will be made of brick or concrete or some type of dense material. And if you Google it, it says that one hundred, almost one hundred percent of the sound will be reflected. So this wall, which is according to my calculations, will be thirty-five feet tall, will become a sound reflector, and that's way above the fence, that's way above the berm. And that's how my house, by the way, this is how my house looks. It's, again, it's even the second floor is twice as tall as this one. So I will be exposed not just to, through some, uh, you know, transmitted sound. This will be a direct sound coming to my way. You see, I'm talking about all these technical things, and this is where the sad truth is that there was no effort on the developer's side in terms of any research, any data or anything that proves that their solution works. They just, I'm sorry, throw things at you and they hope that those things stick figuratively. But that's not how it works. And speaking of the, you know, impact analysis, as part of the application process and as part of your approval process, according to the UDC code, the impact analysis was supposed to be done. That's how you make the decision. And I will remind you that from October, their impact analysis was this, there will be no negative effect on adjoining property values. That's it. Nothing else. So if you don't approve this rezon request, you actually don't deny Mr. Hammond's rights to develop the land. You don't stop Mr. Hammond from rezoning part of his land or even the whole land as long as we, as long as they follow the, um, those UDC protections that are currently in place. Now, I would say this, and I talked to multiple people. So if you were to pick up the best out of the worst solutions, I would say if you were to put a thirty, forty feet tall concrete wall, that the one that you sometimes see next to highways, it's not the best looking, unfortunately, but at least it works. That would be probably again, the, the best out of the worst solutions to mitigate all of that. I also want to mention the car wash. Their plan is to put some, um, trees around it to compensate for, I guess, the noise and everything. Well, there is a properly done research by the government of Canada where it says it is a common misconception that plant vegetation, such as a row of trees or shrubs, can provide an effective barrier against noise. And I would encourage the developer to look at this research. It's an amazing research. It actually talks about the berms, how the berms don't really work that well because the sound wave will bend over and that's how it's going to work. Now, I want to also voice a few questions. I don't think you will ask them, but I want to voice them anyway. Do you agree that there is not enough data and no research to say that the proposed concessions justify and compensate for the removal of existing B, B one protections from those properties like mine? Aside from the bigger size of the store, is it true that the reason this plan works is because B two zone does not have and removes those existing B one protections? Is it logical to say that B two has more negative impact than B one? And thus removal of those existing protections contradicts common sense? Is it fair to say that your decision is actually administrative and does not change the nature of the problem, you know, of the noise? And that's why it does not justify the removal of those protections? Again, their plan is based on just one thing and all of their plans have done just that. So please deny this rezon request. Thank you.
Yeah, we have six seconds left. It's Skip Taylor wants to come up and say.
No business uh, in any way. Uh, should be pushed, pushed aside the citizens and the taxpaying people of this county. That's the wealth of this county, not the businesses. It's the wealth of the human beings that decided to live here and live and raise their children and do their work.
Thank you. Time's up. Thank you. With African lights from rebuttal.
Uh, yeah, we'd like just to, just to say a, a few things, a few comments. Um, I, I think loss in this a little bit is the fact that, um, and I, and I, I know I'll, um, this will be a disagreement between us and the neighborhood. But this site plan has changed a lot. We've been through at least three major changes. I know my firm has worked hours and hours and hours on this, trying to move the grocery store where we thought people would be happy. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, after twenty-five years of being in this business, this developer has, uh, backed down a lot. Uh, normally I don't work with clients like this, but, uh, there's more green space here. Uh, this, this is from the time that we started to where we are now, the difference in the quality of this development is, is a huge change. So I think it's a, it's a win for, for the county. Um, and, and I, I just want you to understand how much this site plan has changed. The original nineteen ninety plan that was on B one had a hundred and seventy-two thousand square foot building up next to the property line. And I understand the concern about truck traffic and that sort of thing, but back in nineteen ninety with a hundred and seventy-two thousand square feet there, that's a lot of trucks and a lot of traffic. And so it's a little different in that, you know, that's been on the table for many, many, uh, many, many years. Uh, as far as the, the berm, uh, Mr. Pittman mentioned, uh, the significance of this, this berm. I will tell you that, uh, this berm has been more of a focus for our firm than any other berm we've ever worked on. Okay? It is a hundred foot wide, uh, fifty feet. We started with fifty. We added twenty-five and now we're at a hundred. And the original nineteen ninety plan had a twenty-five foot buffer on there. Uh, so we have a hundred foot buffer, uh, with a opaque fence. We have a slew of evergreen trees and a bunch of trees that we're planting. We have a berm that we're putting there. Every, everything that I've ever worked on in my career in a berm is going to be in this berm. Now I know it's not the end all be all and, 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 um, but at the end of the day, I, I just want you to know how significant, at least from my viewpoint, I'm not the owner, I'm not the developer, I'm the consultant here. Uh, this is, this is a very, very significant, um, berm. I've never seen one like this. And so, um, you know, as we said earlier, the building did move forward. Uh, we've looked at different locations for the, for the, for the grocery store. Um, and we've done our best to try to come to some reconciliation, but, um, uh, you know, we are where, where we are. As far as the car wash, for example, right now they can put a car wash on this property. It's B one. You go out there and put a car wash now. This doesn't, that type of application doesn't have anything to do with this, with this rezoning. And so, um, I just wanted to make those, uh, statements and I'm be glad to try to answer any, any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Anything else on the rebuttal?
Brandon Bowen, again, for, uh, Mr. Hammond. You know, I was not involved with this case back in October when, when it first came before you all. Uh, I've been involved since then and have come to know it since then. My point when I got involved was to try to figure out what are the, what are the reasonable concerns and how can we address those? And we've done everything we can to do that. And I, I feel like Mr. Hammond did a lot to address concerns before I got involved. But after I got involved, we've done even more so. And again, the, the berm that Mr. Carter has, has, uh, has designed, and frankly, I've done zonings with heavy industrial uses that have much smaller berms than that. That it is, is the gold standard. If anything we can do to prevent any kind of, uh, sound, uh, pollution, uh, or nuisance towards their, these neighbors. But the thing to keep in mind is that Mr. Hammond is a property owner here too. He's owned property for a long time here. Uh, when he bought his, this property, what he's been trying to do is something he could do as a matter of right. And so he has property rights as well. So I appreciate all of you have been respectful of that and have given him concern or consideration and, uh, we're just asked that you approve this, we can put this to bed. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close both the comments, open up to questions for commissioners.
Chairman, I don't, I don't have a question and I, I certainly appreciate the, uh, effort by the red shirt grade. Is that what you call it, Rick? Uh, appreciate you, uh, your efforts in, in bringing your neighborhood together. Of course, the citizens of Oconee County are entitled to understand the reasoning behind my willingness to consider a settlement for this request. When I first learned that a plan was going to be brought forth to develop this track, I was glad to hear the news. Uh, this track has had a concept plan in place since nineteen ninety, which had road frontage on two state highways. And it was my belief then and is now that it would bring much needed amenities to this part of the county. However, and I, I use the terminology version one, version two and version three. Uh, when I, when I saw the first version of this plan, I quickly had concerns about the proximity of the grocery store along the property line near, uh, Corporate Drive. And even though all the neighbors in Oconee Crossings were aware that there was a retail and commercial designation for this adjoining track, version one was a significant departure uh, from the nineteen ninety concept. Now, version two shows up the day of our meeting back on October fourth. And it addressed many of the concerns and truly was a much better plan. The question remained in my mind though, is if the version two plan distances from the homes, especially the one at sixteen sixty Oconee Crossing Circles, if it lined up with the nineteen ninety concept plan? Not having that information that night, uh, prompted my no vote. And of course, all the red shirts helped too. Now, with the additional twenty-five feet that's being presented as part of the settlement, it is my view that the increased buffer and the enhanced screening within the buffer matches. And in some cases even exceeds the distances that were previously agreed to by this county in nineteen ninety, when this property was originally zoned, uh, along with your residential component. And this fact, this fact mitigates my concerns. So that's my reasoning. I, I owed that to y'all because I was, I had a gag order. I'm sorry, Rick. They wouldn't let me respond. They said because of the litigation. I could respond to the, the emails that I've received from you and from Paul. And I also got emails from my friends from people who are supportive of this, that live in the dark corners of vicinity. Uh, they're not here tonight, uh, understandably, but they did express their support. So that, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make that statement because I think I owed it, uh, to y'all as citizens of this county for my reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll agree with them. This has been one of the reasons are our toughest thing that we face here as being commissioners. This was zoned in 1990. The residential component only exists because of the, the commercial portion of it. This version is a lot better than the, the original one submitted. The, and it's closer to the 1990 version that was approved as far as location of the, of the bigger retail building. So.
Go ahead and say something. Now, I really wasn't planning on saying anything, but I've said this many times. I've been doing this. This is my 15th year. I've seen a lot of rezone and lawsuits. And those kinds of things never really bothered me. You know, you get sued. I was police chief too. I got sued personally. So. But I, I think I'll agree with John. These, these rezones tend to be some of the toughest things you have to deal with. You lose a lot of sleep, whether you did the right thing, you didn't do the right thing. But this one's a little bit different than some of the other difficult ones in that it was a PUD where it was designed, voted on, approved. And as I look at it, not saying that the current owner doesn't have a right to come and ask us for something. That don't mean he has to give. The second part of it is the homeowners bought the concept. That to me is very important. It was approved by the local government and that's what it is. You, you pay a lot of money for your property. And, and you bought something that's in the clerk of court's office. You want to go pick it up. So I think any changes that take place, you have to really look at those folks who bought that concept. And, and they're not here just to take one for the team, for somebody else down the street to go to the grocery store. So that makes it a little bit different. But again, it's tough on all of us having to, to do these because so much is, is with y'all. It's your home. It's Mr. Hammond's property, trying to come up with something. I wish there could have been more changes. You know, somebody, being in police work, I've had people tell me all kinds of stuff. You know, but I deal with what I see and what is. I wish the grocery store had been closer to 78. I wish it had been turned. And it's not. Somebody can tell me all kind of, you know, engineer and this, that and the other. I don't care. I could care less. I'm not an engineer. But you know, we got, we got what we got and we'll have to vote. And the vote is what it is. So that's where I come from. It's not just somebody has some property, let them do what they want to do with it. This was something people accepted. It'd be like if I buy a piece of property with a chicken house next to it, I accept that. I'm not going to go make a chicken farm or move his chickens. So I, I think residences, and I know a few of you, I don't know all of you. Well, it wouldn't made any difference if I knew you, but didn't, if you wore green shirts, black with, it wouldn't made any difference to me. I, I think you bought a concept that was approved by the local government. And, and when the government goes to change it, it better be good. So that's all I got to say.
Any other questions or comment? We entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve rezone P 23 dash 0087. Oak County County Board of Commissioners, B1 to B1 and B2, 42.76 acres. Southeast corner of Highway 78 and Highway 53 with the five conditions as presented. Second.
And we have a motion and a second in discussion. So the motion and second is to approve rezon request P 23 dash 0087 with five conditions. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. No vote. One, three to one. Yeah. Next reason on request is P 22 dash 0315 Moose Land Mars Hill LLC. Changing conditions of approval for case number 1967 is 1.38 acre that 1030 Cliff Dawson Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is P 22 0315 Moose Land Mars Hill LLC. This is located on parcel C 02 AE 001 at Cliff Dawson and Mars Hill Road. It's currently zoned B1 and the Civic Center character area. And again, the request is to revise the conditions of the previous B1 rezoning, which is rezoned 1967 to increase allowable building size from a maximum of 96,000 square feet to 10,600 square feet. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets. Slightly larger. These are architectural images submitted with the application and staffs recommends conditional approval with our standard three conditions. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner of the agent other owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Rob Leverett. I'm from Elberton, Georgia, and this is the first time I've had closure appeared before the commission. I'm here on behalf of the applicant brothers company LLC. Director Herring, as he did at the zoning meeting, exactly summarized the, the nature of our application. There was a rezone that was done back in 2000 of this property and the adjacent one that's been developed. There were certain conditions imposed as part of that zoning. And we'd like to change one of those conditions to increase the maximum square footage from 9,600 to 10,600. The reason is since the initial zoning was approved, the standards for the surface water drainage and stormwater drainage have changed. And it, it doesn't appear that we would be able to do another open air drainage on this property to tie in for the other one. And instead we're going to have to do underground water detention, which is significantly expensive. You got to basically dig a big hole and put some large pipes and then connect them up to the back of the drainage facility. Additionally, there, there will be a slope roof, as you saw in the plans there. It will have gables, but it'll be a slope roof. And just due to those additional costs, we're asking to increase square footage. That would significantly increase the value of the project and accommodate the extra cost we anticipate occurring. We also believe the underground water detention will be a lot more pleasing. You know, you don't see it. So it will be a lot more appropriate to that side as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Fritz. Does anyone else wish to speak for?
Not for, Mr. Chairman, but I'm afraid I failed to mention the planning commission's two recommendations. I apologize. Okay. If I could just quickly go over those. The planning commission recommended approval of our staff conditions, but also added two conditions. One, any and all retaining walls shall have facade that matches the building facade. And number two, Keystone brick windows shall be installed along the sides and rear of the building. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else speaking for? Anyone virtually? Speak up against Will Douglas.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Longtime listener, first time caller. We, I, I live in Athens, but own a nearby parcel on Cliff Dawson Road. 1061 Cliff Dawson Office Building there in the OIP zoning. Just a couple of concerns with the rezone request. One being the proposed access easement off of Mars Hill appears to be from an adjacent property owner. So I'm unclear on if that's already been agreed to or approved by the adjacent owner. And if it ultimately wasn't, how that would then impact Cliff Dawson traffic count and only having the one ingress egress there with also the Mars Hill District Overlay being a part of this and the intent of that to protect the high quality commercial and also the residential development nearby. And how that would affect if it was only off of Cliff Dawson. And then the precedent of this already having been rezoned from Ag to B1 with an agreed upon conditions and amount. It just seems to, to set a bad precedent to rezone or rezone when the existing zoning, to my knowledge and understanding, doesn't negatively impact the developer property owner and they have B1 zoning as it is. And so we'd just like to ask the commissioners to, to take that into account as we try to have high quality commercial and office retail along this Mars Hill District. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open up to questions from commissioners. I'm sorry. Did you want to say anything rebuttal wise?
I could briefly. I appreciate everyone's concern. The, I believe the access is already arranged. It's in the, it's in the site plan itself and it was in the, I'm sorry, in the, it's on title. There, we are allowed access to the, the access road at the back of the development. We have access across the other property to get to the ride in, ride out access that's on Mars Hill as well. And I, I mean, I think the drawing show this, this would be I think a high quality development. And as far as the argument about you shouldn't rezone or rezone, I, I would agree if this were three or four years later, but it's been 20 years and, and the reason, as I explained for that request of the additional square footage is because the applicable standards have changed to which changes the requirements of the construction. So we believe it's appropriate in this case and while it is technically a zoning change, because we're changing that one condition, we are not changing the zoning classification of the property. It's going to look like this.
Thank you. Now we'll close public comment and questions from commissioners.
Chairman, I had a couple of maybe questions or, or, or maybe some commentary from the comments that were given at the planning commission meeting. I know Commissioner Horton was in attendance, but I was on the Zoom. So I, I had, I was listening in. And the applicant was specific that they do not have any tenants signed up for this property. Is that my understanding? There's no tenants?
I believe that's correct.
That's good. Now, what's unusual about this track is that it's virtually visible from all four sides. So there's really not a back that is locked, in my opinion, because I traveled by that numerous times a day. And so it is unique in that respect because it's going to be visible from Cliff Dawson Road as well as the Mars Hill Road. So there's some things that I thought from the conversation I heard from the planning commissioner, some of the suggestions that they had. I didn't get so much into the retaining wall because I know that's a issue that they're going to have to deal with as far as the elevation, you know, because it's not a flat lot. So some visiting dirt has to be moved. I'm not so concerned about the chain wall or how it looks. But I did have some issues about the exposed wall. And I think they used terms Keystone written windows. I'm not, I'm not a developer. I'm a banker. I don't know what a Keystone window is. So please forgive. But I think that some of the things I wish my fellow commissioners would consider is that the wall here is on the ends of the buildings contains some either glass windows of some sort of treatment to give it a repression, glass windows. I'd also would ask consideration for a condition that would not allow any ductwork to be visible from the adjacent roadway. Now I know that, you know, that's the trouble when you've got a building that you can see from all four sides, but I think that it would make it a better project if there was no ductwork invisible to the adjacent roadway. Now, if you held a gun to me to tell you the difference between a hip and a gable roof, I, I'd have to beg off. So I know there's a discussion and that apparently some people like the hip. They think a hip roof would be better than a gate. So that's, that's for Mark Thomas and the others that know about that to, to speak to that. I think that of course, concerns about signage. I just want to make sure that it adheres to our ordinances as far as, as well as the Mars Hill overlay. If that adds any additional protections as far as, you know, I don't want flashing signs or, you know, things like that. But the other thing that concerns me is from the discussion from the planning commission was the use of the outdoor storage. And I asked our fellow commissioners, they would consider prohibiting outdoor storage or outdoor display areas because of the uniqueness of this track. Now the other thing, I'm glad y'all don't have any tenants because this is what another thing that I would like for the missionaries to consider is to prohibit certain types of uses for this, for this track, for this building. Those would include, you know, cigars, tobacco shops, bait and electronic cigarettes, used merchandise, variety stores, general merchandise stores, gift commodities and souvenir stores and dollar stores. If y'all would consider prohibiting those uses for this, for this approval of this rezone. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so just here. Can you kind of and talk to us a little bit about the Mars Hill overlay, what protections? Not just this property, but anything that comes in, kind of what?
Right. So, so the overlay is put in place, right, to protect that corridor during the widening. And it was to protect both from a view shed, but also for the residential communities that are around, around that area. So there were limitations on uses that were, that were placed in the overlay district prohibiting certain uses. But then there was also special use requirements that were approved as well in there. So it, it's not unusual that uses are restricted in, in overlays as, you know, what Commissioner Harden has suggested. And we have done that in previous reasons. But, but the idea was to protect the corridor and then maintain its integrity and then its higher quality.
So go back to what Hammond was talking about. There would not be any or nobody could put like storage outside.
That, that's right. That's right.
That's, that's covered by the overlay. So whether we condition it or not, it's.
That's right. Displays and overlays. It, it doesn't hurt to put those conditions in there in case the overlay ever changes. I, I still don't think that's an issue.
Talk to me a little bit about trash containers, lurch.
Right. Yeah. So any dumpsters have to be screened, right? So, so any dumpsters have to be screened. They cannot be next to a residential and they cannot next, be next to a roadway. So it, it is a difficult situation to find a location for a dumpster on the site. But in addition, it will have to be screened by the. Um, but in, in addition, it will have to be screened, uh, by the, the masonry wall, um, and landscaping as well.
Tell me a little bit about signage.
Um, so signage is, is, um, is covered in both the overlay, uh, the Mars Hill overlay and in B one, um, standards, architectural standards. So, uh, there are much greater restrictions in both of those than our standard sign ordinance. Um, so height limitations, uh, no internally lit signage. It has to be externally lit, either down lighting, up lighting, that type of thing. Uh, so we do have greater restrictions, um, in that, in, in that than we do in the regular sign.
Let's talk about the, uh, gable and the hip roof. And so architectural images are showing that it's obviously what?
Cable.
A gable roof. Okay.
You didn't need a gun.
So reading the narrative, the narrative does say that it needs to be a hip roof. Uh, according to Mars Hill overlay. And so in terms of our rezone, which takes precedence, the verbiage that is written or the?
Yeah, so, so the images, we would go by the images. When we review the, uh, the, the building permit that's submitted, the architectural that's submitted with it, we would go by the image. And, and like you said, the overlay would allow either, right? But, but we have to have a pitch through that's either gabled or hip.
Okay. So let me ask, in terms of, since this is here, this was presented. And we know that it, it should be a hip roof. And how we get to the point of change of that, is it going to be a condition?
Right. It, it, and so the overlay would allow either the gable or the hip. So if, if we desire, that the board desires to change it to hip, you certainly can do that as a condition.
I got four wrote down. Yeah, four. Because the signage, the signage is already addressed, right?
Yes.
Sign is already addressed.
What we go with those more was about the end. The, uh, the wall areas on the ends. As far as being something other than just a wall. And I think I heard suggested that the planning commission, uh, windows. And I think, um, guy has suggested at least a minimum of twenty percent of the wall be some sort of window treatment. That was one of the conditions. Uh, that I put forth. The other is that no duct work be visible from adjacent roadways. Uh, the third one was, was the hip roof to be incorporated instead of the gable. Uh, the fourth one was that outdoor displays and outdoor storage be prohibited. Now, that may already be the case, but as Guy says, we might want to go ahead and include that as a specific condition. And also to prohibit the, all those uses that I had mentioned. Uh, the cigar and tobacco stores, the used merchandise stores, variety stores. Gift novelty and souvenir stores. General merchandise stores and dollar stores. For those, along with the other conditions that, that the, I mean, that the staff had recommended. Okay, I'm sorry.
So really one of those would replace number two.
If I could make sure I understand, uh, sort of what's being proposed. So one proposed condition would be to require that twenty percent of all walls be covered with some kind of window treatment or just end wall.
In, the end.
The end walls. And that would be in the, in the, um, rendering the wall that has the gable. Right.
Whatever is visible, what we have to look at every day.
Okay, so ev- every wall then?
Well, I, I'll decide storefronts will have windows and doors.
I would, I would think so, but, but I still want to understand the condition.
Yeah.
That's what we got to live with legally. If, if it's, if it's, you know, to your point, I think we're fine with these conditions, but I just want to make sure we understand going forward. Um, no outdoor, uh, I think there's no storage, which I think is already covered, but we're, I don't think we have an objection to that condition. Um, the hip a- and changing it from a gable roof to a hip roof, I think is one condition to two. So that would change what's on the plan we presented. Um, and then, um,
No duct work?
No duct work visible. That I've, if I could turn my plot, ask about that. So there would be some duct work, I mean, again. Unless you bury the duct work, it would be good. Is that Mr. Prince, what you had in mind?
I think. Yeah. We'll go back over the whole list after we finish our discussion.
Well, I, I would just like the opportunity for a little input before you make up your mind. Uh, so that's what I was just concerned about. And, and I would point out.
The duct work be invisible from the roadway in that respect.
Okay. And I, and I think I understand that. I'm just trying to find out the, the scope of that.
I'll, I'll make God enforce.
And, and I would note that the existing zoning already prohibits a number of uses itself. Um, and it includes bake sales, builders equipment, material storage, bus terminal, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so it's got a number of, of restrictions as well. So we'd be, we'd be making a rather robust list of, of prohibited uses. And of course, uh, I, I don't know that we have a huge problem with, with most of these, but, uh, you're just always nervous when you're you're limiting your options of what you can do with property.
Since you don't have the tenants yet, I felt it's better to do that tonight.
Uh, well, yes, it just, I guess there's a concern on our part about that sort of limits the ability to define one, unless the commissioner is interested in it. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Most big.
Yes, sir. Um, you guys just mentioned something about the duct work is required on the outside. So speak to the type of unit that you're going to use. Obviously, it's going to be a package unit as opposed to a split unit. Okay, so why would you not use a split unit?
It's not, not as efficient.
That's, I I beg to differ, um, with you on that. If you would, I can show you different tables. You can get better efficiency with a split unit than you can with a package. Um, so that's really personal choice. And your personal choice would be to have duct work on the outside of the building. But there are other options. You could put split units in and they would be the same efficiency. Or better. Just give it what I think it is. Well, I have a license in that, so I understand that pretty well.
All right. So if I understand where we are, there were three original conditions. And condition number one from the planning commission. It appears we have five additional. First one being a minimum of twenty percent of all where areas, all wall areas on the ends of the building shall be glass windows. Is that right? Okay. No duct work shall be visible from the adjacent roadways. Hip roof shall be incorporated instead of gable. Outdoor display areas and outdoor storage is prohibited. And the following uses shall be prohibited. Cigar and tobacco stores, including vape shops and electronic cigarette stores, used merchandise stores, variety stores, dollar stores, general merchandise stores and gift novelty and souvenir stores. Is that what, is that right? And that would be nine total, because the, the condition number two by the planning commission would be replaced by your first condition. You wouldn't need the rock accent or brick accent to make it look like a window if you actually had one.
Clarification again on like windows. And we're talking about twenty percent of the area of that, of the ends of the building, even after the hip. Roof goes out, it would have to be twenty percent of the wall, twenty percent of the wall. We need to be an actual window or just, uh, have some kind of deck or a feature.
That type of glass, I believe. So you could, I guess you could still brick it and just put them, I don't know. I, I can't design a building, so.
So we also have all of the uses that were on the regional zone.
Yes.
I, I, just to preserve our rights, I would say we don't, of course, don't object to the original zone. Adding all these news and concerns, we don't have a
Understood. Thank you. All right. Feel comfortable with my wording on the, all right. You're good with them? So, uh, any other questions or comments on this?
No, something just struck me, I guess. It's not uncommon for the additional conditions that we placed on use to be on some other rezones that we've done.
No, no, no. Yeah. Yeah, conditional rezones used often and use restrictions are used often in this country.
And some of the ones we put in, we, those have been used in the past.
Yeah, that's right. Yes.
All right, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make most of the approval, rezone P twenty-two zero three one five Mooseland Mars Hill LLC change conditions approval. For case number nineteen six seven, one point three acres, ten thirty fifth thousand road within nine conditions.
Second.
Give me a motion and a second to approve rezone request P twenty-two dash zero three one five with the nine conditions as presented tonight in discussion. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just, just as a matter of, uh, courtesy and, and personal privilege, I think we ought to recognize that, uh, Representative Everett has, uh, made an appearance tonight and thank him for his service. And, uh, also say he's a friend of mine, because we're both local government lawyers and we see each other at seminars and things. So it was, it was fun to see your work tonight, Rob.
And he, he was a real champion this, this round to try to get the, uh, sole amendments, uh, handled as, as well as some truckway work. So we appreciate your work on that as well.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chair? Was, was your father Freeman?
Yes.
Okay. I knew him. Yeah, yeah, pretty much. You come from good stock.
Yeah, next rezone is P twenty-three dash zero zero four three K B B LLC. It's going from A G to A R three. Seven point eight two acres, southeast corner of Highway fifty-three and Bishop Farms Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P twenty-three zero zero four three K B B LLC owner. Uh, this is parcel B zero six zero two two F. It's currently zoned to A G and the civic center character area. And again, the request is rezone from A G to A G and A R three to create two A R three tracks. And then the remaining track would be A G, uh, for state planning purposes. This is the concept plan that you have in your packet. And, uh, staff recommends conditional approval over our standard three conditions and planning commission recommended approval, uh, with staff conditions. Thank you.
All right, Robert. You probably could have gone across the street.
I think I could have. I think I could have, gentlemen and ladies, um, Robert W. Bishop, eleven thirty Trailway Drive, Watkinsville, representing K B B LLC. Any questions?
We're good. We may actually come summon just a minute.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Anyone else wish to speak for the rezone? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually on either? Thank you. With that, we'll close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Read this about that. I got it now. I just got to get it. Approve rezone P twenty-three dash zero zero four three K B B LLC. A G to A R three residential. Uh, seven point eight two acres, southeast corner of Highway fifty-three and Bishop Farms Parkway agricultural use, I mean, condition. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve rezone Penny, P twenty-three dash zero zero four three with three conditions. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is.
I would like to say one thing to Mr. Bishop. He had, he had hair when he was playing with shortstop for me. He still didn't have hair. I didn't have much and I lost it dealing with you.
Our next rezone is P twenty-three dash zero zero five one. It's Triple C Family Limited Partnerships going from A G to A R. It's ten point zero three acres at twenty-three seventy-one Coal Springs Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P twenty-three zero zero five one Triple C Family Limited Partnership. This is a, a portion of parcel A zero five zero zero two. Uh, it's currently zoned to A G in the rural places character area. And again, the request is reason the property from A G to A R and A G for a proposed, uh, four lot minor subdivision. These are the four lots, uh, proposed to rezone to A R. Slightly larger. Uh, staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Planning commission also recommends approval with same conditions.
Ken, you want to present?
I'd like to just say any questions, but I got a little bit more I better talk about on this. I'm Ken Bell, Bell and Company. Um, ten forty-one Lake Wellbrook Drive, Okuna County. And, um, I've been working for quite a while, Mr. Prince, over the years, going back seventeen, eighteen years. He came and met with us, uh, about designing the entrance to his estate and, uh, doing the planting plans and walkways and many other, uh, fun things to work on over the years. But he never asked me to do any subdivision work, which is the main reason why I've come for y'all most of the time, subdivision and zoning. And that's what I'm here for tonight. So finally, after about seventeen years, uh, he came to me about a year and a half ago and said, Ken, I want you to find twelve lots out of my seven hundred and plus acres that I can give to my grandchildren. And so I said, well, let me do some thinking about that and see what I can come up with. So I look. He's, has been over the years acquiring multiple properties and that's how ultimately now he's gotten up to about seven hundred and forty acres. But in all that time, he hasn't subdivided any of it except maybe for building his own personal house on the property. I think he had to subdivide out some of it. Um, and that's about it. So, um, what he wanted me to do is figure out where we could place lots that he could give to his grandchildren. And so after assessing the entire project, I figured out that we can do all twelve of those lots and only four of them would have. and only four of them would have to require a rezon. And so these are the four that would require the rezon. So we're going from AG to AR. So these happen to be on Coal Springs Road. Uh, and it's basically right across the street uh, to the entrance of Lane Creek Golf Course, which is also zone AR. But those lots are more on the thirty thousand square foot range to an acre and a half where we're proposing two and a half acres, uh, which is the minimum size that he wanted to have to be able to give to his grandchildren. So we, we're calling this a legacy subdivision just because everything is staying in fat. So there's no desire to sell anything out there. So it's not being done to raise money for any reason whatsoever. Not there's anything wrong with that. But this is just to create a legacy. This is four of the twelve lots I've got to figure out on the rest of his estate. I'd be happy to answer some questions if I have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for? Anyone virtually? There will move those who want to speak. Anybody want to speak against? Julian signed up. Do you want to say anything?
Hey, how you guys doing today? I'm Julian. I live at fourteen eighty-four Clough Filter Road on Borbo, Georgia. And um, this is my first time here. I wanted to meet everybody here and kind of get a good sense of how everything works. Um, but when I seen the rezon here right in front of Lane Creek, um, I thought it was going to be a lot of houses, but since he said it's four, um, I think it's fine, um, especially if it's a, you know, legally legacy where his grandchildren, I think it's fine. Um, I just want to make sure it wasn't a lot of homes, you know, because I like Oconee County to be nice and subtle and peaceful, you know, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone wish to speak against? You want virtually? We'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve rezon P twenty-three zero zero five one Triple C Family Limited Partnership, AG to AR, ten point zero three acres, twenty-three seventy-one Coal Springs Road. At culture with three conditions. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, second to approve rezon request P twenty-three dash zero zero five one with three conditions. In discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is special use twenty-three dash zero zero five two. It's EA Three Investments LLC. It's changing conditions of approval for case number four, six, three, nine. Special use approval for residential amenity lot in the AR zoning district, four hundred and fifteen point four eight acres on Treadwell Bridge Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty-three zero zero five two EA Three Investments LLC. Uh, there we go. It's a, a portion of parcel A zero two E zero zero one. Are the requests in special use for an amenity center. It's currently zoned AR in rural places. And again, the applicant's requesting special use approval to construct a residential amenity lot under the existing AR zoning. This is a principal use as allowed as it's by special use approval in the AR zoning district according to previous conditions on the property. Uh, this is the proposed location of the lot, uh, the mini lot in the subdivision. Slightly larger version. Some of the amenities. Notice pickleball is one of them uh, at, at the facility. Staff recommends conditional approval uh, with three standard conditions and planning commission recommend approval with same conditions. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Good evening. My name is Ben Prue with Smith Planning Group and also resident of Madison. Just representing the, the owner here. So this larger property, uh, it's roughly about ten acres that's being the ask for to be a specially used permit for recreational use and amenity for the development called North Haven. Back in two thousand and five, the larger property was rezoned. Um, and this was Oconee's, uh, county's ask was that some amenity would be provided for the community. So uh, so that's kind of merely the, the client just trying to meet those conditions. Do you want to point out there are two phases to this development? The first phase is currently under review. Uh, the amenity lot is located within the second phase. Uh, and upon approval of this, that second phase would go, uh, their construction documents would be submitted for review. As you can see, uh, the, the amenity lot is uh, interior to the larger parcel uh, and adjacent to uh, basically uh, Walton County. Um, happy to answer any questions that may come up. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for? Anyone virtually? Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? We'll go ahead and close uh, public comments, open up to questions.
Just curious, God, remind me, how many lots are in this development?
I do not know off the top of my head. The applicant might.
I'm sorry. In, in both phases?
Yes.
Okay, one hundred and sixty. All right, thank you.
No other questions. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll uh, be glad to make the motion to approve the special use P twenty-three dash zero zero five two for EA Three Investments LLC for change of conditions. Approval for case number four, six, three, nine, special use approval for residential men who lot in the AR zoning district with four hundred and fifteen point four eight acres on Treadwell Bridge Road with the uh, conditions as presented.
Yeah, we have a motion and second to approve special use P twenty-three dash zero zero five two with three conditions. In discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Now ready for some text amendments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You have in your application packets. Okay, all right. Uh, you have in your application packets some proposed UDC amendments. I'll go with those briefly. Uh, planning commission did recommend approval of these proposed amendments. Um, article two, we're proposing to revise table two point one, uh, principal uses allowed by zoning districts to combine pet care, grooming, boarding, and training, uh, with the exception of veterinary services uses. So that would be in section two oh seven oh seven. Uh, number two, update table two point two accessory uses allowed by zoning district to allow personal backyard hen flocks in R one zoning. That's section two oh seven oh seven also. Article three, uh, number three, detail the minimum lot size requirements for breeding versus boarding kennels and include requirements for pet sitting. And we'll go with those briefly in just a minute. Uh, number four, require the roof pitch for one story many warehouses to be twelve, four twelve unless otherwise approved by the board commissioners. Number five, remove the moratorium on timber harvesting. Number six, revise the dead end streets cul-de-sac design standards so that specific street length is no longer included in the dead end street requirements. That's section ten oh eight oh four. Number seven, modify residential subdivision entrance requirements such that the entrance streets with ten lots such that entrance streets with ten lots or less and meeting all other requirements do not require a deceleration lane. That's section ten thirteen oh two. Number eight, clarify the projects that were final plated prior to the code change in twenty nineteen will not be subject to the sidewalk requirements in the code, current code, uh, which is section ten fourteen oh two. Number nine, add a water line exemption in major subdivisions with ten lots or less and a minimum lot size of five acres or greater so that those major subdivisions have the option to use wells for water service. That's section ten sixteen oh two. You have in your um, application, uh, in your packets, the examples of each of these. Um, and I'll be glad to go with those if you have any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners?
I have one um, in article two. The one that's uh, speaking to the backyard chickens.
Yes. Can you scroll down to that one, please? No, I think it's, I think it's back up in the tables. Is it number two? Scroll down. Right there.
Yep.
Backyard hen flock, personal, uh, where we, you'll notice we changed the, uh, we added an allowable uh, in R one.
Right. And uh, so my question is, is that I think the, some of the lot sizes in R one may be a little less than an acre and I think parameters are based on this on an acre or so. Uh, would it be appro, would it be appropriate to allow five, you know, five chickens per lot? For lots that are less than an acre and then lots that are larger than have it on a scale basis based on that.
Sure. It, it, we can do that. The um, the requirements are right now you can have a, a maximum of five chickens per acre. So, so what that does, right? Yeah, if you have a lot that's less, that's sub acre, one acre, then it's, it's a chicken and a half or whatever it looks like. So.
Nothing that's for space.
Great. So um, so yeah, that's, that's certainly appropriate. So each lot could then, uh, a lot, if it's less than an acre, could have five chickens. And then any lots that are over an acre would have, would have to maintain that standard of five per acre.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they had two acres, then it'd be ten chickens.
Yes, that's correct. Roosters are not allowed.
Thanks, sir.
So you're recommending that change? Okay. Any questions or Commissioners on that? Any concerns? Uh, do we have any public comment on these text amendments? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the text amendments as submitted with the one change. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, second to approve text amendments with the change discussed tonight. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Melissa, come on up. Next item is possessed, presentation of the FY twenty-four budget proposal.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I am here to present the FY twenty-four budget proposal, uh, which would go into effect on July first, twenty twenty-three and carry us through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Do you want to just cover the county's mission statement and let you all know that as we work the budget process, we do strive to make sure that the budget is achieving the county's mission, uh, to provide high quality services in a fiscal responsible manner, uh, to Oconee County citizens. Uh, and also to design the budget with the strategic goals of the county in mind uh, to support growth of infrastructure and high quality services in the government. Without further ado, uh, the FY twenty-four general fund proposed budget is thirty-eight million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, this represents the revenues and expenditures. So we have a balanced budget at this amount to carry out uh, the mission and strategic goals. Just a quick reference for you, uh, comparatively to about this time last year at thirty-seven point eight million and currently proposing thirty-eight point eight million, an increase of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars at about two and a half percent. There is much more uh, to the story than the two and a half percent. So we'll take a look at it in more detail. Uh, proposed revenues as compared to, um, on the right hand side, our current year FY twenty-three amended budget. And this is presenting the revenues by sources. And then on the left hand side, you have a chart that shows you the percentage of each source compared to the general fund proposed budget. As you can see, the property taxes are forty-seven point four percent of the proposed budget. Local option sales tax at twenty-seven point four percent and other taxes at eleven point seven percent. With the remaining budget comprised of charges for services, permits, licenses, grants, fines, and other fees. Uh, looking at the changes by revenue source from twenty-three to twenty-four, can see that there is actually a decrease in property taxes. That decrease is related to uh, the one mil reduction that the board committed to with the passage of T-SWAST. Uh, that net overall reduction is one point nine million dollars. And that local option sales tax, the second largest component of revenue for the general fund, um, is increasing approximately one point six million related to a combination of new developments in the county, um, and also growth in the tax itself. And the other revenues are fairly not flat, but they're, they have smaller increases um, in the twenty-four proposed budget, um, with the exception of um, interest income, investment income, um, which was higher than anticipated in twenty-three, we did um, increase from our original budget in twenty-four. Uh, but we didn't jump to where we're currently at right now. Um, as you know, that is subject to change and we don't want to over and overstate the revenues. So looking at expenditures, you can see the expenditures um, by what we call function. Um, so if you can think of that as kind of the departmental um, costs of operating. Law enforcement, jail, and E nine one one make up the largest percent of our general fund budget at twenty-eight point five percent, followed by administration and operations at seventeen point five percent. Also by public works at eleven point nine percent. And we'll talk about these um, kind of by classification in a moment and look at areas of spending, but just to mention the few that have the largest changes between years. Law enforcement, jail, and E nine one one has an increase of approximately seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars related to personnel changes. Administrations and operations actually decreases and that is related to uh, administrative building being budgeted in the current fiscal year and hopefully complete before the next or close to it. And public works, you will see um, a decrease as well. And that is related to T-SWAST funds. Funds may being moved over to the T-SWAST funds from the general fund to offset that reduction in property tax revenue. So as um, I mentioned, looking by classification, kind of what are we spending the general fund dollars on? Um, our largest cost is personnel and benefit, that fifty-four percent of the general fund budget. You can see an increase um, in this line item from prior year. So just like to mention a few things that we've placed into the budget for your consideration. Uh, we do have um, an increase in the base level staffing charts of two thousand five hundred dollars and budgeted step increases for employees who qualify for the increases along with additional positions, an administrative receptionist, a part-time position in elections moving to a full-time elections assistant, two property tax registrars that are part-time, and four deputy sheriffs in law enforcement. Following the operations and maintenance at a twenty-seven percent of our general fund budget, you do see that number decreasing. And again, that's because of paving activities moving over into this lost fund. Capital outlays, two percent of the budget, payments to other agencies at three percent, debt service at six percent, and supportive other funds at two percent. Uh, so showing the total budget of the thirty-eight point eight million. And just to look at capital specifically from the general fund, um, we have IT call manager upgrade, uh, our fleet maintenance, um, lifecycle management program, uh, jail control systems for the HVAC, public works, infrastructure, and park facilities equipment. Right? And moving past the general fund for a moment, looking at the total proposed budget of seventy-five million, eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. The total proposed budget includes the general fund in addition to SWAAS, capital, special revenue, and enterprise funds. So comparatively to prior year, it's an increase of nine point one million. Brings us to thirteen point eighty-seven percent increase. And that increase is related um, to the T-SWAST budget. The T-SWAST budget in and of itself is on ten million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Looking at total proposed revenues, you can see that property taxes are twenty-five percent of our total budget with water and sewer revenues coming in at nineteen point two percent. It's one of our enterprise funds illustrated in the total budget. Local option sales tax, fourteen point four percent, T-SWAST, fourteen point three percent, and SWAAS. Local option sales tax, fourteen point four percent, T S F O S fourteen point three percent and S F O S nine point five percent. So in combining all of the local option sales taxes, it brings their total sales taxes to thirty eight point two percent of the county budget. You can also notice here the total of the proposed is seventy seventy three million, six thirty eight, nine sixty four. On the previous screen, the number was at seventy five million. So the total revenues budgeted is actually less than total expenditures. So the plan is to use fund balance for some of the funds such as S F O S collections around prior period. But we plan to spend some of those in this current period. The same thing happens with grant funds and special revenue and in our water resources department as well. Illustrating the expenditures by those departments as well. Water resources expenses, twenty point five percent of the total budget. Public works is at fourteen point eight percent of the total budget. Jail, law enforcement and E nine one one at sixteen point one percent of the total budget. Right, the capital fund is a fund in addition to the general fund that has capital contained in it. We are working in the new fiscal year to reserve the capital funded budget for long term projects that cross multiple fiscal years. And reserving one time capital purchases in the general fund. So for our capital fund in FY twenty four, we're starting with county facilities of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's related to the administrative building in the event that there is a rollover of that project and funding is needed in next fiscal year. And also life cycle management programs for law enforcement and public safety. Communications upgrades and safety equipment. S F O S two thousand and fifteen. The only referendum line item that we anticipate having at the start of FY twenty four remaining is historic and scenic facilities, two thousand, hundred and two thousand, five hundred dollars. Our S F O S twenty twenty one is our current active S F O S that is still in collections. And so from that, we are planning on debt service from our parks geo bond and our administrative facilities geo bond. Paving at two million dollars, county facility improvements at three hundred and forty five thousand dollars. You'll notice we don't have any law enforcement vehicles budgeted for FY twenty four. If you recall recently, we did an amendment in twenty three to go ahead and purchase those vehicles because they were actually on the lot. And we did not have to wait for them to come in. So you'll see that a couple of more times with the no value budgeted. Fire rescue vehicles and equipment. We do have a pumper truck that was approved and ordered in FY twenty two. And we believe that it will be ready for receipt in FY twenty four at six hundred thousand. Along with additional equipment for fire and rescue at two hundred and seventy seven, three hundred. The total of eight seventy seven, three hundred. Water and sewer facilities, we've placed in one hundred thousand dollars for land acquisition. If needed for an bridge pump station project and distributions to municipalities from S F O S receipts. And the first time I get to present a budget to you for T S F O S twenty twenty three is effective on April the first. So we should get our first full distribution in May. So we haven't collected on it yet, but we are budgeting for paving of six million, related services of just over three million. And then the payouts to the municipalities per the intergovernmental agreement. The related services while not entirely paving also have minor paving repairs included. And other things such as professional services, roadside care and non paved road improvements as well. Another large fund of the total budget is our enterprise fund, the water resources department. The proposed budget is fifteen million, three seventy one, seven oh one with a decrease of approximately six percent. So you can see the revenues on the left and expenses on the right. Total revenues budgeted fourteen million, two hundred and sixty six thousand, while expenses are budgeted at the fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy one. Fifteen million, three hundred and seventy one. This is another instance where we're using fund balance from prior years to complete. The FY twenty four expenditures. And that is in that capital outlay section where that fund balance is being used. So the wastewater appears to have a decrease in revenue. While the revenue is increasing, we do have a decrease in S F O S that's allocated to water resources. So that's the apparent reason for wastewater decreasing. Sewer sales actually are budgeted to increase along with water sales. And expense classifications. Really across years, it is a minimal increase. The personnel employee benefits are receiving the same increases that were mentioned in the general fund. Operations and maintenance is fairly flat. Capital outlay is decreasing substantially from the FY twenty three amended budget. FY twenty three contains the budget for calls creek project. That budget was approved as a multi year capital project. And so the balance of that project will roll into the next fiscal year. Once FY twenty three has completed, so that project will continue. Right, so we'd like to take a second to show you how we are using this budget to meet the strategic goals that were presented using commitment to public safety, transportation, water and sewer and feet plate. Fleet phase replacement program. The public safety is forty one percent of our general fund budget. You can see the chart on the right demonstrating all the different components of public safety. Those components are shown as our total budget. And showing the operations component and the capital components that make up the public safety. And just to go down a few items that were requested and proposed in the budget for public safety. We have building maintenance for law enforcement's administrative building, building the jail and E nine one one. Investigations is receiving additional cameras. The law enforcement group is supported by equipment of armor rifles, pistols, car cameras and lasers each year. The jail is requesting ten additional cameras inside the jail to make sure that they can monitor everything that's needed. The courthouse is receiving additional secured access by the key card system. E nine one E nine one one radios are included along with life cycle management funding for their CAD communication system program. And sheriff officers body camera systems. Includes as well animal services building, maintenance and improvements. And supportive general fund match onto a breathing air machine that was we received grant funds for. Transportation, maintenance and improvement. We are looking at total paving budget in FY twenty four of nine point one million. Prior year was four point nine million. So you can see that green area in the chart is the increase related to T S F O S that was voted and approved. So public works makes up twenty percent of the total budget. The proposed capital for the enterprise fund supporting the water and sewer infrastructure gives you a list of what we anticipate will be working on in FY twenty four. And current projects not on this list that that will roll into the future year already mentioned includes calls creek, phase one and two construction. Our philosophy with the water resources department is as projects are ready to be initiated, they would come to the board of commissioners. And if approved, then we would request budget amendment to include those funding sources for the project. We also do have one piece of equipment recommended for them as well, many excavator there at the bottom of the list. And our fleet phase replacement program. We talked about the fire set and pumper and the county's fleet of two hundred and five thousand dollars consists of vehicles for road department. Parks and fire. And those are part of the replacement where when we add a vehicle, we also dispose of and sell the vehicle. And law enforcement again is not budgeted for since the purchases were in FY twenty three. So our current schedule is May twenty third to have our first public hearing, June sixth to have our second public hearing along with the budget adoption. And if I can take a second just to thank all of the departments for all of their work that they put into this budget and for meeting with us and administration and their time. And for finance for their support and all of the work that went into it. And thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to thank them.
Any questions from Melissa? So all these items along with the fee schedule will be posted to the website. Citizens go out and look at that. And again, our next our public hearing will be on May the twenty third. I'll give everybody time to digest it and come up with questions and comments. But again, thank you to Melissa for great presentation and a lot of hard work to get us to this area. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the percentage as submitted.
Your motion is second in discussion. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. We have no need of an executive session. Commissioner Sacks. We are adjourned.